I'd like to call the beater for order if he can say his pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We have no visitors signed in wishing to speak. We do have some committee reports. Technology.
Yeah, that's me, yeah. So, thank you to Dr. Shanahan. I got to sit in on my first-ever district technology committee meeting. Back at the beginning of February, on February 7th, we met from 4:00 to 5:30. We spent the bulk of the meeting discussing different facets of the district technology plan. As part of the commissioner's regulations, each district must develop and maintain a tech plan to be submitted to, as I said, every three years. And ours is actually due to be updated and resubmitted in June of 2025, so next year. A few highlights that we discussed as a group. We did a really cool collaborative exercise where we got to review and propose some revisions to the mission statement. Dr. Shanahan gave an overview of goal number one around computer science and digital fluency standards and kind of shared the work that the district has done thus far. We're prepared for a full implementation in September of this year. And also, we worked to evaluate progress towards our second goal centered around professional development. Had a great discussion around what work needs to be done before June of next year in order to achieve this goal. So, our next meeting is scheduled for May 16th. And we'll continue to evaluate that mission statement and the second goal.
Great, thank you. We also had a dignity, equity, inclusion committee meeting. Diversity, I'm sorry. No, it says dignity.
The committee name should be diversity.
I'm reading what it says.
We did meet with our diversity, equity, and inclusion committee, Mrs. Goldhawk and myself, on February 12th. And that was rescheduled from the snow days, but luckily approximately 40 members were able to be in attendance. That included staff, district, building, and administration, parents, and many students who are very eager to contribute, which was lovely. We reviewed our assigned reading of the joint statement from the Attorney General and the Board of Regents, as well as the culturally responsive sustaining framework. And then we broke into stakeholder groups and pulled apart some important information and questions that we wanted to explore from each section of the culturally responsive sustaining framework. And then we reviewed our drafts of the mission and purpose statements for our diversity and equity inclusion committees. And the draft of the mission and the purpose statements will be finalized at our next meeting in March. And we will also develop our final plan that's going to be incorporated into our strategic plan at that meeting.
Great. Do we have any other reports?
Could we just welcome Dave Lowery from the Erie County Association of School Boards, who's brought us treats tonight?
We certainly can.
Come visit all of the districts.
If he has extras and wants to leave them, that's good too.
A lot of great work was done last year with Mr. Penella, Dr. Shanahan, Mr. Belial, Ms. Buzinski at the helm. We rebooted that strategic plan district-wide. And what we really did is we dove into it starting with our middle school strategic plan and summer retreat this year. We hadn't had one of those in a while, so it was nice to bring that back. It was my first one as building principal at Amber's Middle School. And we had stakeholders across the board. We had teachers, paraprofessionals, clerical administrators, of course, and parents. So, a wide array of stakeholders as part of the Amber's Middle School family to dive into our strategic plan district-wide and then prioritize goals and initiatives that we wanted to work on for the 23-24 school year and beyond. Lots of brainstorming, lots of sticky notes, lots of lunch, lots of treats. And we came away with several initiatives that we have shared out with our building faculty-wide. We've had subcommittee breakout meetings, we're analyzing data. We're looking at a lot of those technology standards that was referenced earlier today. But what we're going to focus on today are 10 of the highlights rooted again in the pillars of our overarching strategic plan. Teaching and learning, student in life, student life, excuse me, and then Amber's Pride in general. So, again, we will highlight 10 of those. We're going to hop in right off the bat with teaching and learning. And this one really kicked off the year well. We know that we have fantastic faculty and staff here and we have fantastic faculty, parents, rather, excuse me. And we started the year up with a positive postcard initiative to really connect those two parts of our school and home connection. And how we did that was through a positive postcard initiative. What is that, might you ask? It's pretty straightforward. We all know that the best communication home starts on a positive note. And we challenged our entire faculty before the Columbus Day break in October to make sure that at least one note, handwritten personalized note to every student went home before Columbus Day. So, with the help of Lori Sosinko, here is a screenshot of what the postcard looked like. And every single student received one of these postcards. And that's not an easy task when you have 650 students. This was well-coordinated, so thank you to the front office staff who maintained the spreadsheet. We were constantly sending out weekly reminders. We've hit 25% of our students have received a postcard so far. Now, we're up to 50, we're up to 75. Here's the last 30 or 40 kids. Let's make sure that we're making a good connection with them. We're challenging our faculty to come down during their planning to make sure that they're taking that time to write a personalized note. "We're happy you're in class, you've gotten off to a great start, keep up the good work." And we're proud to say that, again, we met that goal with 100% of students receiving that postcard before Columbus Day. This is just one of the pieces of positive feedback that we received from a student's parent. This was sent to Senor Walling, one of our Spanish teachers, an email that she shared with me just stating how happy and proud the parent was to receive the email. "We're so proud of our son, his teachers like you who support and bring out the best in him. Thank you so much for taking the time to send us a message that truly brightens our weekend." So, it's just one of those nice positive moments to start the year off on a great note. And then we doubled down on that. We've carved out additional time in our faculty meetings and we've given additional incentives and charged to our parent, not to our parents, excuse me, to our teachers to keep that correspondence and the communication going throughout the year. That has taken form in many ways and shapes, but one specifically is that we are carving out specific time in faculty meetings for two to three phone calls. So, before we actually start the meeting, we're asking teachers to hunker down in their room and to make that phone call, whether that's, again, a positive phone call or a phone call asking for a little bit more support and encouragement at home. So, we know, again, that the school and home connection is tremendous. This was, again, rooted in our summer action planning committee to make this a strategic initiative, and so far, so good. I'm turning it over now to Mr. Kice to talk about an initiative related to computer-based testing.
Not as fun, but important nonetheless. So, going back to the strategic plan, one of the initiatives was obviously to make sure our students and staff were ready for computer-based testing. You might have heard from our, I'll say, elementary schools, grade five and grade eight mandatory now for all assessments in the spring to be digital, no longer paper-based. Which depends on how you look at it, but it could be bad, it could be, could be good, less paperwork, I guess. But, one of the things we set off over the summer with the strategic plan was to make sure exposure and confidence, and that went for both students and staff. It's a big change, but let's make sure, let's not worry about the actual assessment. Let's make sure we are confident and we know what to expect. So, in the summertime, we spent a lot of time with our teachers, training them on, "Hey, take your assessments now that are paper, just put them in this platform." So, they're comfortable. Don't do anything different. We're a great school, don't do anything different, just put it on this platform. So, we spent some time, obviously, making sure that assessments for the teachers, for the students, were good to go. Kids were comfortable, teachers were comfortable with how to instruct and what tools to use on the new state platform. We also spiraled in keyboarding for grades six and seven in anticipation for years to come. The state's telling us, obviously, sixth and seventh grade in future years, so let's get those computer skills up to date. So, don't just start with eighth grade and say it's done, let's spiral in certain things. A big thank you needs to go out to Amy Stager, Dr. Shanahan, Andrew Velella, Donna Frymeyer, also making sure our, I'll say, our hard lines are capable. We have Wi-Fi, we don't have any dead zones. Is this going to be around the entire school? Do we have the capacity to do this? With all of their help and us coordinating our efforts, we ran a simulation in January with the entire eighth grade prepping roughly 10 questions put out by New York State, saying, "Hey, try." It went off without a hitch. Everything, Andrew's end from Donna's end, Amy prepped us very well. But the teachers and students, in talking to them, coming out of it was like, that was nothing. Like, it was, which goes back to, again, the planning and commitment that we had in this district, going back to exposure and confidence. Nobody had any issues, including students. They actually enjoyed it more so than, I'll say, the paper-based. Moving on, also, not as fun as, I'll say, positive postcards, but multi-tiered systems of supports, MTSS, as we like to call them. I know a lot of you in this room have heard us talk and talk and talk, but it's very important. It affects 100% of our students. So, roughly, just to go a little bit of background, tier one, you're looking at roughly everything in the classroom that's done. 80% of our population, 100% of our population fall in that. Then we start to look at students that might need a little bit more support in tier two. And then all of a sudden, you get up to that tier three. Those are, that's small percentages that need a little bit more, almost individualized efforts to try to coordinate. What do they need and how do we get them to be where their potentials should be? Okay? So, what we started this year and continue, we continue, obviously, our MTSS stuff, but as far as what we started this year was implementing problem-solving meetings. So, we do three benchmarks a year in the fall, winter, and spring. But we also noticed if we really want to get to the crux and the heart of some of our tier-two and tier-three students, three months in between, four months in between is too far, again, too much time in between. So, we devoted some time and we bring in all the staff that some of our students work with. What's the best possible support for this student? Some of those students might take DNF, they might be also special ed, they might be in an ANAS class. All these different services, well, let's get together, let's try to coordinate. Do they need all of these services or can we be more efficient with our time? Can we be more efficient with a student? Is the student getting a whole Amber's experience? Because all those services might take them out of, they might take them out of a tech. What is the best course of action for that child? So, that's where we implemented problem-solving for the first time this year, is to devote that to our tier-two and tier-three students. Just to give you a frame of reference, so there's our benchmark schedule in the fall, winter, spring, progress monitoring and problem-solving. And we're going to continue this, and what we're looking to is to partner up now with the fifth grade, not just for the benchmarking, where do the students need to enter us at? But let's start right now in fifth grade, moving into sixth grade, so it's not disruptive in that big transition year. How to be problem-solving now? What does that child need? What do the parents want? So, it's a whole collaborative effort between school and home to try to make sure that child gets what they need and the supports. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lonzak for another MTSS AIS new course.
Thank you, Mr. Guys, and kudos to Derek, he's done a great job. That is not easy work, getting all of those stakeholders together to do what's best by kids when you look holistically with everyone involved. So, that's a lot of work behind the scenes to really serve the students, who are second to none in this district. Along those lines, more kind of at the tier-one, maybe the tier-one-and-a-half level. A need that came out in our strategic planning this meeting specifically in the summer and then backing up to last year within our ELA department was a little bit more focused on writing skills, specifically for students that I might call kind of your quintessential middle-third student. Think about your student who's maybe at the 80, 85 average, and they're just in need of a little bit more reading and writing support. These came back through several department meetings at ELA and along with our AIS reading and writing department. And what we've come together with is, we've highlighted a new class this year. It's a class that we call Writer's Workshop. It's taught by Ms. Everstark. So, we have roughly 40 or 45 students in grade seven or eight in this class this year. And again, the targeted student is a student, again, who is not qualifying for a tier-two or a three service. They're doing a little bit better than that, so to speak, on an overall academic profile. But they are students that need a little bit more of a push and explicit instruction in what is good writing. So, hence the course Writer's Workshop. Really, what it's doing is deconstructing the writing process at its crux. It's taking a look at what is a good introduction? And let's break it down. What is a hook? What's the importance of a hook? How does that then transition into a thesis statement that will then give you frame of reference for the rest of your academic writing? And this course is meeting semester-based every other day, and it's paired very nicely with the traditional ELA course. So, these students are still taking their regular tier-one ELA course, and they're getting additional writing support through this new class taught by Ms. Everstark. Mini lessons, brainstorming, student conferencing, peer editing, these are just a few pieces of the class. And the feedback so far, I'm proud to say, is good, but don't take it from me. We have a video here for you, and you're going to hear from Jackson, Donovan, a dog outside, no, and Mackenzie here to share a little bit with you about what Writer's Workshop is like for them.
Hi, I'm Jackson. My name is Donovan.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie, and we're here to tell you about the Writer's Workshop at Jefferson School. Writer's Workshop class was a community course that we took. We have a 32-week week that went over essay building skills, obstruction of the right, and acting policy. Skills can be used in middle school, high school, college.
In all honesty, it really did help me get my evidence and my details all onto the paper. It really helped me know what I wanted to write down instead of having to go back and forth and look at it like an example. Like, I could just go with the flow, it would be really easy to just write it all down without even having to think a second thought.
Something I learned in Writer's Workshop was how to write introduction. In my ELA class, we were writing an essay, and I was struggling to how to write the introduction. But using my skills from Writer's Workshop, I figured out how to write my introduction, and I got to be great at it.
So, I learned that, like, the basic skills are, like, just written down. I learned, like, what I needed to include to, like, go from getting, like, eight out of 10s to like 10 out of 10s and being able to, like, really write more than that of what I was trying to say without having to spend a lot of time with teachers and answering questions.
One of the fun things of Ms. Everstark was that for almost every Friday or every time of the break, she would do a free write, and she would put a picture on the board, and we would get to write about whatever we thought the picture was about. What it really did is that it helped me get all the stuff that I needed onto the paper instead of having to, you know, try and look back and forth at what I wanted to do, what I wanted to do. I could just think about it, and then I could just put it down on paper. It really helped me go with the flow, and it really helped me know what I wanted to say and then put it on the paper. It's like talking, whatever you want to say, just say it. But with writing, you don't really think about what you want to put on the paper. So, really helped me, it just felt like talking, but instead of talking, I'm writing it down. It just makes things a million times easier.
And they all ordered Tim Hortons breakfast, courtesy of the principal for their breakfast station. Strawberry lemonade for breakfast, who would have thought? But, again, students, the feedback is phenomenal. Early on, when they find out they're recommended for the class, undoubtedly, middle schoolers, "I'm not a writing class, I struggle." Getting them through that and keeping that positive is a strength of Ms. Everstark, and the class is off to a great start. So, we're really pleased with that course. It's just one of the many offerings that we have within our overall MTSS process. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Doyle and Mr. Kice for pillar two on student life.
I'm going to take the first one. This is, this was, I'll say, this was fun. The beginning of the school year, one of the things that our PPS staff and I, along with our administration, noticed is we do a great job with orientation for sixth graders. What we found, obviously, the first day of school was anxiety-ridden for seventh and eighth. Where are these classes? Where's my locker? Who's my home base teacher? So, what we decided to do was open the building at the beginning of the year for everybody. The orientation for sixth graders still stayed in place, but we had lockers set up for all. And I can honestly say we offered, had an ice cream truck outside, but our building at Halls was hundreds, hundreds of families through that took advantage of this. And also on top of that, myself, Scott, and Julie also took the time, set up an hour-long meeting with new seventh and eighth grade families. So, people that didn't know about Amber's District, were new to the middle school. We could put faces with the building and who they can talk to. They had their schedules in hand, thanks to our PPS staff that already had parrot teachers. They had web leaders ready to walk our new seventh and eighth graders to classes, so they knew where they were going day one. The turnout was fantastic, it's something we are absolutely going to continue in the future. But, again, going back to that relationship piece with home, all right? When students and families actually know who they're talking to, can see and are comfortable, everything kind of moves forward. So, that was a big initiative that took a lot of time. Thank you to our PPS staff and our web leaders, but it was fantastic to see. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Doyle.
Thanks, Mr. Kice. Regarding student life, I think, you know, obviously, students have to be in the building to grow and to learn. And while we've always tracked attendance, we're trying to be a little bit more intentional and strategic about it. So, this year, starting in September, meeting with PPS staff, we developed a pretty involved tracking system and set of interventions. We established thresholds based on what New York State deems chronic absenteeism, which is about 18%, which would translate to about 32 school days in 180 days. So, we set a threshold of 10%. In every five-week period, we send out letters that are tailored by the guidance counselors. I generate the letters, the guidance counselors tailor notes on those letters. They indicate, you know, we've talked on the phone, we know what's going on with your son or daughter. We'd like to set up a meeting just to touch base how things are going. So, that's worked well. I think the big thing that we are wanting to know more is, are these interventions, are these meetings that we're setting up, these phone calls, are they correcting, are they, you know, meeting what we want it to do? And is it having an impact on attendance? Just looking at a little data, we can tell that based on the first round of letters that went out, about 68% of students improved their attendance over a 10-week period. But, again, what we just had a meeting the other day is trying to find out, you know, we want to recognize progress, right? We certainly don't want to throw another letter at a family after attendance has improved. So, that it's really important that we're really intentional, looking at where's the percent now this five-week period at the 10-week mark? Where are they, you know what, things improved, we want to recognize that. So, it's been, it's been good, and I think that we all recognize that after the pandemic that it's difficult sometimes getting some families back in the building. Another thing we recognize is that we're pulling some families out of the woodwork that we haven't traditionally had really good relationships with, and that's a positive thing. I think you'll recall from last year, I talked about the mentoring program and how, you know, the whole idea behind it was is that students having one adult mentor or one adult relationship in the building is going to make them more connected. And we know that that improves educational outcomes. So, this year, we expanded it, and gratefully, from the Alumni Foundation, we received a grant, a healthy grant, that is allowing us to kind of create some group cohesion. We only had a couple of group activities last year, but this year, we've been able to do several group activities. We did cooking things around the wintertime, we did two, we've now done three activity nights where we do a late bus at about 5:30, students stay after, play basketball, we have tons of board games laid out. And it's just, it's been really good for these students who are traditionally kind of disconnected from the building that are a bit more connected than they were before. We just took a field trip to Classic Lanes just this past week, and that was awesome, just to see them having fun. And we're going to do a service trip to a nursing facility to work with some people and to get them out of self. I think that that would be important. I think, though, it is really important to note that the 50 students in the program and approximately 40 adult mentors are all volunteering. All the faculty are volunteering their time. And really, the need of the program, and I think the most important thing, is that faculty and students are finding time throughout the week to meet. And here's a picture of Mrs. DeYoung with a student right here, and she's teaching her how to knit. And this morning, they were sitting there too, just learning how to knit together. And they meet like three times every, three times a week early in the morning to do that. And that really is, right there, that's, I think, the biggest thing that we want to highlight, right? The group activities are great, they're wonderful, they create a group cohesion, but those individual mentoring that's happening all the time is incredibly important. Here's just some images from some of the activities that we've done this year. I'm going to highlight some of the extracurricular opportunities. Obviously, we know a diverse set of offerings is incredibly important. And I think that one of our greatest additions is the club, our stomping ground. The whole idea behind this club is to create an opportunity for students from all sorts of backgrounds to come together and say, "How can we be a more inclusive community?" I have to say that I think the leadership, Tammy Hoibler and Angelis Sefleida are incredibly courageous people because I think facilitating conversations about diversity and how to celebrate Black History Month is not something that people really always want to take on because it can be messy and it's difficult. And they took it on, and they're doing an awesome job. So, just recently, there was, students were able to sign up voluntarily to participate in these shorts and chats in the cafeteria to talk about issues surrounding Black History Month and all sorts of issues regarding diversity. They spearheaded a fundraiser for one of our own students who is struggling with pediatric cancer, and that's that picture in the right-hand corner right there. And probably the one that is most associated with our stomping ground is Cultural Fusion Night, which was hosted last year, and it brought in all sorts of families to bring in meals that celebrated the cuisine of their particular culture. And again, it brought in communities of people that traditionally don't walk in through the doors for athletic events, and it was an awesome event, and they're going to kind of build on it this year. Another great club is this yoga mindfulness club. It was started by Kelly Murphy, and I think, you know, with all the research that we are starting to see about mindfulness and meditation in educational settings, that this is a really a great club. And we have students that are meeting all the time with her after school and participating in this. Girls in STEM Club. I believe Dr. Shanahan had a big hand in encouraging the creation of this club. Krista Jones is the leader of it. But it's rooted in the reality that, you know, STEM by the, I think everyone knows, is science, technology, engineering, math. But it's rooted in the reality that women are traditionally underrepresented in engineering careers, science and engineering careers. And so, it's brand new. They just started, they did a cringles challenge just a couple of days ago, which is a fun engineering activity. Requires a lot of patience and trying to figure out and finagle how to place the cringle chips to create a circle, a big circle. So, there's more to come on this. I know Lori's been reporting on sort of what's happening with that. They're taking a field trip to, what's?
Northrop Grumman.
Northrop Grumman.
Aerospace, engineering, writing, and learning, right?
Right, so that's coming up pretty soon, that field trip. So, more to come on the Girls in STEM Club. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lonzak to talk about Amber's Pride.
Sure, Mr. Kice has a personal question.
Before I click, I need to, I'm going to go off-script real quick. So, I'll say, on the behalf of the administration for the middle school, not too long ago, we had an emergency at the high school where everybody had to evacuate here. And it's a source of pride for the three of us that nobody really sees behind the scenes, but that was before our day even started, before staff arrived. And just to watch, and, you know, some people say crisis reveals character and things like that. I need this building, the community, to understand that people drop coats, where do you need me? It wasn't what's going on, it's where can I help? Nobody asked questions, they just jumped into action. And I think for us, we need you to be aware of that, we need the community to be aware of that, that not a single kid in our buildings, day was disrupted. Students were excellent, both high school and middle. And it was just, when we sat down afterwards just to kind of reflect and brief, it was like, wow. And I will honestly say, in the four to five years that I've been here, that was one of my proudest moments, is watching that and then reflecting on that. So, I just, before we go on, when we hear pride, that's what I want this room to know. It wouldn't be a middle school presentation without the music and arts department. We're going to start with Mr. O'Donnell, our orchestra and art club teacher. Went down to Keybank and actually played while fans were arriving as kind of almost like a little pep rally for an actual Savers game. They were able to attend the game, they were able to go out on the ice, kind of see what it is like. But just to give you a quick, a quick little taste of what they were doing upon fans' arrival. So, it's in connections, it's on our website. So it's in connections, it's on our website. If you want to see more, you can visit. But again, just beyond the Amherst orders, you know, we're visible and can be seen. They're doing great things. And the musical, Nucies Junior was fantastic. And I want to highlight one thing because again, a source of pride is, just so you know, aside from students on stage who are outstanding, over a hundred and thirty-five students in our building participated in this production, which is over twenty percent of our entire student body from six through eight. So we talk about diversity after the inclusion. This brings everybody together. So it didn't matter what grade you were in, what role you had, watching these students put this production together. And mostly the audience doesn't see what goes on behind the scenes or the costumes or the set, set paint. It is fantastic. So over twenty percent of Amherst Middle School was involved in this. And then we also had six students do a little crossover with the high school. And actually I think, I believe had major roles too in the high school production of their seventy-fifth anniversary Les Mis. So again, music and art, we need to highlight as well, but bringing, bringing Amherst Middle School together. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Lonzak.
Thank you. And perhaps our biggest undertaking this year and something we were proud to bring back. And the planning started well beyond the start of this school year and a lot of the work in the summer was done to make this event happen and it's Career Day. One of those quintessential moments in many middle schools is a Career Day. It's been a long time since we've had one here at AMS. And this wasn't just any Career Day of a quick fare walking through the gym. This was an all hands on deck, a true community partnership with close to seventy outside professionals from our district coming in. Alumni, connections from teachers, connections from many of you in this room. This event was an all day event for our students, a complete special schedule. A lot of work and undertaking went on to make this happen. Kudos and thank you to our PTSA for a generous grant to make this happen as far as a luncheon and additional supplies to bring in the many speakers here. Kudos to Mr. Bill, again, Ms. Jones, Ms. Chilman, Ms. Goldman, they were, Ms. Nelson, they were the six Career Day coordinators behind the scenes making this event happen. And I'm just going to click play and let you watch here a few highlights. We have a quick two and a half minute video. Thank you again to Mrs. Cinco for helping put this together to just show you a little bit of perhaps our most proud moment, AMS Career Day 2023.
As middle school teachers, we want to give middle school kids as many options as possible to look at for a career. And we have over sixty-four presentations with different types of careers in it. And the kids are going to get to see a lot of that and they're going to get to see what's out there.
We have over ninety people from the community coming in. We have some parents, some aunts and uncles, some family friends of the faculty. We have some children of the faculty that are coming in. We are going to have two major assemblies, a magic show and a reptile guy coming in. We have a Taekwondo center coming in to teach a grade level at a time, a bunch of Taekwondo. And then there are over sixty-four presentations.
I think what the middle school kids will get the most from Career Day this year is they're going to see some careers that maybe they've seen in the past and may look a little bit different now. They're also going to see lots of things that are behind the scenes. So for example, we're bringing in a doctor who's an orthopedic surgeon, but he's actually bringing in his entire team, a radiologist and everybody that works under him, a nurse, everything. So you can see the process from start to finish.
And we have so many different careers. We have a lot of medical fields coming in. We have lawyers coming in, we have chemists coming in, we have gym owners coming in, we have a couple of different coaches. One is a tennis coach and one is a basketball coach. We have, oh, so many, we have chiropractors, we have Pilates, we have yoga. There are so many different types of careers. We have five different rooms of engineers coming in. Another wonderful thing about this Career Day is it probably can help a lot of these middle school students to start thinking about careers that they maybe would have never thought about. They might be in a room watching a presentation and it might excite them or make them start thinking about a path or a career that they would not have thought about before. It could also start leading them into certain classes in the high school that they could now take that they wouldn't have thought of if they didn't see these certain presentations that excited them.
We are a middle school post career day and I think that is an enormous accomplishment for all of our staff and for the administration here at the middle school. I've seen it at high schools, I've never seen one at the middle school, especially on this large scale. This is our way of showing the kids the options that they have. And they don't have to pick right now, but they can start, sort of start looking at things and narrowing things down as they go towards high school.
And I got attacked by one of those dogs too, so. Yeah, it was a fantastic event, tons of great energy. And again, not just our Career Day committee, but all of the teachers jumping in and making this day a tremendous success. A lot of work went into that and a lot of fun and a lot of smiles were had and the feedback from our faculty staff. And most importantly, our students was incredibly strong. We're going to look to do this on a three year basis so all students are exposed to it. We have a couple of ideas and it works. For some kind of annual kind of fun event, Career Day being one of those in the three year rotation. So more to come on that. As we wrap up here, again, we'd like to just thank you for your time and for allowing us to do a dream job, which is to be the administration of such an amazing middle school and amazing district. We are constantly sharing the good news at AMS Connections, which is emailed out every Sunday afternoon. So you can keep a lookout for that. We are always looking to post and highlight all of our great things that are happening on social media as well. So be on the lookout for all of those. I know that you are, and we're proud of that. There are great things happening each and every day in our building. And again, thank you for all of your leadership and your support. It does not go unnoticed and unappreciated. So with that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to address.
I had a question about the mentorship program. So what are you seeing as some of the outcomes of those relationships that are being built and fostered?
So one of the initiatives this year is to really get that idea of, you know, what kind of impact that's having. I think early on, we have noticed that some of the students who are connected are not frequent flyers in terms of behavioral issues. And I mean, we can't control for all the variables, that might be why, but I would like to think that having more connections here is part of the reason. But in terms of more data, we absolutely want to look at sort of how can we, how can we look at what's happening and what impact it's having? Anything else that you want to?
Big thing is that trusted adult, knowing that if a student is in crisis or if they just need someone to talk to, we know right away, we partner them. That trusted adult in the building is number one. And again, that behavioral data is a big part of it and that's just one of the many factors. Looking at long-term goals and academic improvement is something we're going to continue to do.
I mean, one anecdotal thing I'll offer that I saw is that there's a couple of kids that have walked around the building and really not connected, not behavioral issues, but not connected at all. And they're showing up these after school activities. And that's just two individuals in particular, but they started the program last year in sixth grade and are now in seventh grade. And I'd like to think that that's part of it.
I would also just add, we talk about trusted adult. We hear more often from friends of friends like to let us know about an issue. But more and more since this program has started, we had, we get emails, myself, Julie and Scott, from the mentor saying they reported this. So, which we obviously look into and follow up with. But I sometimes wonder too, I don't have numbers to back that up as far as hard data, but I do know the number of incidences that may have been prevented and also have been addressed have drastically increased due to those meetings weekly that we do with mentors.
Well, thank you.
All right.
It's great to hear all the wonderful things going on in the middle school and I appreciate you sharing them with us tonight and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will move it on to new business.
All right, we'll need a motion for new business.
I'll make a motion for new business E1A through K, 2A through E and 3CDE and H.
We have a second.
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, E1A through K, 2A through E and 3CDE and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Ms. Custody, do we have any follow-up action items?
I do now.
We'll need a motion to go to executive session.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session regarding employment of a particular person.
You have a second?
One second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, everybody, for coming.